Welcome, everyone. The hour being 7:04 PM, I'd like to call to order the City Laconia City Council Meeting of September 14, 2020. Prior to that, there will be an introduction for electronic meetings I'm required to read, so bear with me. No changes from the last 10 times we've done this, I bet. As Mayor of the Laconia City Council, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are, A, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All council members have the ability to communicate during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to watch the live YouTube video at Listen to this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 1-646-558-8656, or participate by the Zoom app. Webinar ID 823-6027-0804. Password 652596. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided on the City of Laconia's website at www.laconianh.gov. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem, please call 524-3877, extension 249, or email at cityclerk@laconianh.gov. D, adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll, call, vote. But start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states his presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. I'd ask the City Clerk, Cheryl Hebert, to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Present.
Counselor Susie?
Here alone.
Counselor Lippman?
I'm alone in a room alone.
Counselor Haynes?
Here, physically present.
Thank you. Counselor Hamel?
Counselor Hamel had contacted me earlier today, indicating that he was traveling.
Thank you. Counselor Fauch?
I am here in Grand Alva, in my car alone.
Thank you. Mayor Hosmer?
I am physically present here in the Armond Bolduc City Council Chamber. Thank you. Also joining us at the council table this evening is City Manager Scott Myers, as well as Finance Director and IT Extraordinaire Glenn Smith. Before we start tonight's meeting, I'd ask that we proceed with a salute to the flag. I'd ask Counselor Cheney to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Cheney. Moving on to tonight's agenda. Acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. These are the regular meeting minutes of August 24, 2020. Minutes of the meeting were distributed to the City Council on Friday, August 28, 2020, by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, with no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk. The minutes will be accepted as distributed. Moving along to number eight, which is consent and action items. Under 8A is acceptance of a liquor enforcement grant in the amount up to $748.35 to perform joint alcohol enforcement of the local liquor establishments with New Hampshire Liquor Enforcement. Per Resolution 2019-24, a resolution relative to the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated funds made available during the fiscal year, per RSA 3195-B, in an amount less than $10,000. A list of unanticipated funds has been provided, and it is the grant in the amount of $748.35. Be looking for a motion to move to approve the acceptance of the liquor enforcement grant in an amount up to $748.35, so made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Further discussion from fellow counselors. Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative. That motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Under number nine on our agenda, this is the opportunity for citizens to make comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. So, anyone watching, listening in on Zoom or watching via Zoom, now would be your opportunity to comment on matters not on tonight's agenda, and I'll certainly pause here and wait for you to identify yourselves and... Thank you. With no one apparently raising his or her hand, we'll move along to number 10 on the agenda. 10A is Brad Fitzgerald, seeking an appointment as a regular general public member of the Building Code Board of Appeals, to a five-year term expiring at the end of March. It's been brought to our attention that Mr. Fitzgerald will be unable to proceed with the interview, and we'll be rescheduling that. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So, moving right along now to 10B. James Regatto, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Licensing Board to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2023. Mr. Regatto is currently a regular member of the Licensing Board. His term expired at the end of March 2020, and he is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2023. There are no vacant regular or alternate positions available on the Licensing Board. Interviews of individuals applying for appointment or reappointment to various boards and commissions will be held at this meeting. Appointments will be made at the Council's September 28, 2020, meeting. Mr. Regatto's application has been attached to the agenda that we've been handed out. And Mr. Regatto, if you are there and would like to raise your hand, we'd be happy to hear from you. Thank you, Jim. If you could unmute and just introduce yourself and get that established on the record, and perhaps why you are requesting reappointment.
Sure. I'd like to continue the work that we've been doing for the Licensing Board, and I feel that every citizen in the City of Laconia that enjoys being here should be giving something back to the city, and this is just one way that I feel I can do that. And I've enjoyed being on there, and I've worked with a number of you, and I look forward to continuing.
Jim, thank you for your willingness to serve previously, as well as your willingness to continue serving. I'd be looking at the fellow counselors. Are there any questions for Mr. Regatto? Counselor Cheney, and you're on mute.
I... I don't have a question for Jim. I want to point out to my fellow counselors that when I was the police chief here back in the 80s, Mr. Regatto was part of the Licensing Board. So, he has extensive experience, and I think it's great he's willing to continue on after all these years. I want to compliment him for the time and effort he's put in up to this point, and strongly recommend him for this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cheney. Any other comments on Mr. Regatto's application? Seeing none, Jim, thanks again for your willingness to serve and your years of service to the City of Laconia.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Moving along to 10C. Chris Condametracchi, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. Mr. Condametracchi is currently a regular member of the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board. His term expired at the end of August 2020. He is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. There are two vacant regular positions available on the Downtown Tiff District Advisory Board. As stated earlier, interviews will be tonight, with appointments being made at the City Council's September 28, 2020, meeting. Mr. Condametracchi, if you're with us, raise your hand, and we'd love to hear from you.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Very well, Chris. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
So, just a quick introduction and perhaps a few words on why you'd like to be reappointed.
Sure. I was appointed with Dave Bound's approval, and when he did that, I felt an appreciation from him to not only be involved in the city and whatever capacity it could be, but also after, you know, serving with Pat Wood, I got a great appreciation for what everybody does in the city, and hopefully I can continue to help and make an impact to continue bringing the downtown back to the way it was back in the 80s when I was a little kid.
Chris, thank you very much for your willingness to serve and your commitment to service previously, and you know, it's... I think Counselor Haynes and I both kind of chuckled when we heard our friend David Bound's name mentioned, because we miss him sitting here at the table. But I don't have any questions for you, Chris, but if anyone else has questions, please raise your hand. Counselor Susie?
Chris, thank you very much. I want to stay on the board. My question is, I was looking at the application, and I don't know you. And I look at this, and I say, "Do you live in Laconia?"
No, I do not. I live in Concord. I have a business with my brother in Laconia. We own 635 Main Street. I grew up in Belmont, and my father worked in Laconia for many years for the state of New Hampshire. And we moved our offices from Belmont to Laconia five years ago. And in those five years, we have seen the advent of the Colonial Theater coming into play, as well as influx of young businesses trying to come into the downtown area. I go to Laconia every day, so I feel like I'm there just about more than I am here with my family in Concord. But that was a compromise with my wife, moving to Concord as opposed to Laconia.
Do... Does... Basically, that is your offices are there in that Green Law Building, right?
Correct. They're on the third floor in the Green Law Building.
Very familiar with it. My other question is offline, because I see some of your notes. I'd like to know how I could get ahold of you if I wanted to.
Sure, I can give you my cellphone number. I think I might have misinterpreted the application, because after I had submitted it, I realized that I had selected "Don't publish anything." So, I'd be happy to give you any communication, any way to connect to me that you needed.
Okay. I just, I found the application a little bit odd. Let's put it that way. And get you or ask you questions ahead of time or whatever. And that's what led to this, okay?
Yeah, I'm hearing every other word. I didn't get what you last said.
Then I was asking the question about where you lived, or how to contact you, is when I read a little bit odd. There was no information on that. That's why I wanted to reach out to you. Thank you.
No problem.
At some point in time, let's see if we can get together for a few minutes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Myers, Detective. Counselor Cheney?
I would just ask that between now and our next meeting, if Mr. Condametracchi could fill in these spaces, so that those would be available to the council at our next meeting.
City Manager Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, two things. I apologize for not getting back to a question that Counselor Susie asked me by email over the weekend. I left town on Friday and literally got back around 3:30 or 4 o'clock this afternoon. So, I think the crux of the question was, does somebody have to be a Laconia resident to serve on one of our boards or commissions? And generally speaking, the answer is yes, especially if they have some judicial, semi-clawsy judicial authority, that type of stuff. So, a planning board, a zoning board, certainly we would want those folks, library board of trustees, where they're dealing with dollars and those type of things, absolutely. The Tiff districts are slightly different, because we're looking to limit it to people who either live, own, or manage a business within that district, because the district is supposed to be represented. So, sometimes there could be some limitations, especially in a downtown district of who might live there. So, that's the flexibility that we added when the council added, when the Tiff districts were created for the criteria of manage a business, own property, or own a business, or live within the district. And the Tiff is an advisory board, so the Tiff does not have any final decision-making authority. Anything they would do would be advisory to the council, and the council would be controlling any dollars over that. So, that's a slight difference there, counselor. The other point with having folks put their personal email addresses, email addresses, or cellphone numbers out, as you know, our council agendas are public documents, and I can certainly understand why somebody would want necessarily to have their personal phone number out there blanketly on the internet for anybody who wants to grab it. We'd run into a couple of situations, maybe in some of the land use issues, where someone's personal cellphone was on there, and all of a sudden, those people were receiving calls from butters of a project, and people were going directly to them outside of a public meeting, where those questions and those comments should be vetted. So, that's why we give applicants the opportunity of either having their personal information out there on the application for the public to see or not. Certainly, anytime a counselor wants to get in touch with an applicant, please reach out to my office. We've got that information. We're happy to provide it. It's just something we offer in order to provide someone some personal privacy of not blanketly having an email or a cellphone number or a home phone number out there as well.
Mayor? Henry Lippman would like to make a comment. Go right ahead, Counselor Lippman.
So, I know Chris and his brother Mark, and I personally think they would be, continue to be good to have him on this advisory council. They've made a significant investment. They actually own the building. They've done some great rehab inside of it. They've recruited new businesses to be down there, and they're just the type of business people, I think, that are helping to make Laconia downtown turn around. So, I appreciate Chris coming forward, and I appreciate in his brother's work when other people weren't willing to.
Thank you, Counselor Lippman. Any other comments from counselors? Seeing none. Chris, again, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Oops. Oh, Counselor Fauch, I couldn't see whether you had your hand up.
That's okay. I was basically just going to say the same thing as Henry. I know them as well, and want to thank him for stepping up, and everything does.
Thank you, Counselor Fauch. My apologies.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions, again, thank you, and we'll move right along. Moving along to item number 10D. This is the Honorable Charlie St. Clair, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Planning Board to a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. Mr. St. Clair is currently a regular member of the Planning Board. His term expired at the end of June 2020, and he's requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. There are no vacant regular or alternate positions available on the Planning Board. And as indicated previously, interviews are this evening, and appointments will be made on September 28 at the regular City Council meeting. So, Mr. St. Clair, if you're with us, could you introduce yourself and let us know why you are seeking reappointment?
Hi, everybody. I've had just so much fun on the Planning Board. I would love to do it for another three years. And actually, seriously, I take it very seriously. It's an important position, and I like to think I've done a good job trying to listen to everybody and work with Dean and his staff. So, that being said, I would like to be reappointed if the council will see fit to do that.
Representative St. Clair, thank you for your willingness to serve and your service previously to the City of Laconia. I'd look to fellow council members to see if there are any questions for you right now. Seeing none, hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving along to 10E. Jewel Fox is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Planning Board to a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. Ms. Fox is currently a regular member of the Planning Board. Her term expired at the end of June 2020, and she is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. There are no vacant regular or alternate positions available on the Planning Board. As indicated earlier, interviews are this evening, and appointments or reappointments will be made at the City Council's regular meeting on September 28, 2020. So, Ms. Fox, if you're with us, reintroduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be reappointed.
Hi, I'm Jewel Fox, and I joined the Planning Board at the tail end of somebody else's term. So, I've been at meetings since April, all of the Zoom meetings, and I've learned a lot in the time I've been on. I've really, I'm beginning to understand what an important process it is and enjoy being part of that process. In addition, I have been working as a census taker, and that has been a really interesting addition, because I have been to so many neighborhoods I had never visited before in Laconia that I've learned a lot about Laconia and doing the census-taking work. So, I'd like to continue the same thing. I find it very rewarding and hope that I get a spat.
Ms. Fox, thank you again for your willingness to serve and your previous service to the city. I'd be looking at the council members here, seeing if there are any questions for Ms. Fox. Seeing none, thank you again, and we'll move along to the next interview.
Thank you.
Under 10F, we have Gail Ober, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. Ms. Ober is currently a regular member on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Her term expired at the end of August 2020. She is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. There are no vacant regular positions and four vacant alternate positions available on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. And as indicated earlier, interviews are this evening, and appointments and reappointments will be made at the regular City Council meeting of September 28, 2020. Ms. Ober, if you are with us, we'd love to have you reintroduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be reappointed.
Yeah, my name is Gail Ober. I've been on the zoning board, oh, on and off, for the last four or five years. And I continue to wish to serve the city in that capacity. It can be quite thankless at times, but it's okay. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask them.
Thanks very much for your willingness to serve, Ms. Ober. If there are any questions of Gail? Seeing none right now, Gail. I guess you're free to go on your way and check back with us on the 28th.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Are there two openings on the ZBA or just one?
There are no vacant regular positions
Oh, okay.
And four vacant alternate positions available on the ZBA.
I see what you're saying, but there are two vacancies that you're interviewing for tonight.
Technically open, and Steve Bogart is coming up and technically open. They were the only two who applied to serve on the zoning board.
Right.
So, technically, there's a vacancy, because the seat is expiring, but there were only two applicants.
Okay, and my question is...
Thanks, Gail. Any other questions?
Yeah, is it two applicants for one position or two?
No, there are two applicants for two positions.
That, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I like your odds.
Well, I, you know, whatever. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Gail. Moving on to 10G. This is Stephen Bogart, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the ZBA to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. Mr. Bogart is currently a regular member of the ZBA. His term expired at the end of August 2020, and he is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. There are no vacant regular positions and four vacant alternate positions available on the ZBA. As indicated earlier, interviews are tonight, with appointments and reappointments made at the regular City Council meeting on September 28, 2020. Mr. Bogart, if you're with us and could reintroduce yourself to everyone here, and let us know why you'd like to be reappointed.
Good evening, Mayor, counselors, and City Manager. My name's Stephen Bogart. I've been a regular member of the ZBA for going on about 18 years, and I've had that honor, and it's been a privilege. I also believe that serving your city is one of the main things that being a resident, you know, it's part of fulfilling your city needs. I work with the ZBA. I'm also the treasurer for the Laconia Youth Football, and I'm also the elected ward clerk for Ward 5. So, I try to do what I can for the city as a citizen, and try not to, you know, you got to give back, and that's the only way you can do it. I feel like after 18 years, actually, in my previous state I lived, as you can see, I've also done zoning and planning work down there, going back to 1994, I do believe it was. So, I bring a lot of experience to the board, and I think we've had a lot of good decisions we've made, and I'd like to continue providing my service if the council so sees fit.
Mr. Bogart, thank you very much for your willingness to serve previously, your commitment to public service, and certainly your willingness to continue to serve. I know it means an awful lot to the city to have folks like you willing to step up.
Thank you.
I would look to my fellow counselors for questions of Mr. Bogart. Seeing none at this time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to 10H, which is Dean Anson II, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Conservation Commission to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. Mr. Anson is currently a regular member of the Conservation Commission. His term expired at the end of August 2020, and he is requesting reappointment to a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2023. There is one vacant regular position available on the Conservation Commission. And as indicated, Mr. Anson, previously, the interviews are this evening, and appointments and reappointments will be taken up at the regular City Council meeting of September 28, 2020. Mr. Anson, if you are available, I'd ask you to reintroduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be reappointed. Yes, sir?
Mr. Anson was in the meeting earlier, but I don't see him as in the meeting at this time.
Okay. Mr. Anson, well, if you're offline for a moment, or we can pause for just a moment here?
If we see him come back on, we can let you know.
Oh, that'll be great. Absolutely. If he's not on right now, but comes back later, we can certainly be happy to interview him. for that reappointment. Moving on to 10I, again, Mr. Anson, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Lakes Region Planning Commission to a four-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. Mr. Anson is currently a regular member on the Lakes Region Planning Commission, having served on the commission representing the City of Laconia for over five years. His term expired at the end of June 2019, and he is requesting reappointment to a four-year term expiring at the end of June 2023. As indicated, interviews are this evening with appointments and reappointments taken up by the city council at the regular meeting of September 28, 2020. So, Mr. Anson, if you've joined us by chance, now would be the time to say hello and tell us why you would like to be reappointed.
Are there any other positions open?
Great question. Doesn't say.
Believe these are stagger terms that we have.
Thank you, Councilor Cheney. Mr. Anson, not being present at this moment, certainly if he were to return to the virtual meeting on the Zoom platform, we'd be happy to talk to him then. Moving right along here. Public hearings, it's number 13. It was up under 13A is the public hearing for ordinance 221-37 relative to the conversion of three of the two-hour parking spaces on Union Avenue in front of 781 Union Ave to 15-minute parking spaces. So this is the moving three of these from two hours to 15-minute parking spaces. Notice of this public hear, notice of this public hearing notice was made available in the August 27, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Community Center, and SAU. The estimated cost of this conversion is $200 for the parking, for the required parking sign. This report was submitted by Wes Anderson, Director of Public Works, excuse me. This will be taken up under unfinished business later on in the meeting. So at this point, I'll open the public meeting at 7:36 and 35 seconds and see if anyone would like to speak. With no one raising their hands. We are going to close the public hearing at precisely 7:37 PM. Under 13B. Number 13B. Is a public hearing for Resolution 2020-14 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2015 bond in the amount of $6,077,000 and $90,077,093. Notice of this public hearing notice was made available in the August 27, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Community Center, and SAU. It's anticipated that this action will reduce city interest expense by $292,656 over the remaining life of this bond with $29,172 of savings accruing in fiscal year 21. Action on this item will be taken up under unfinished business later on this evening. This was reported by Glenn's, report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director, and I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:38. And it'd be an opportunity for anyone to speak if they so wish at this point. With no one indicating or wishing to speak at this time, and the public hearing for this matter will be closed at 7:39. Moving right along. Under 13C is a public hearing for Resolution 2020-15 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $630,000. Notice of this public hearing was made available on the August 27, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, Community Center, and SAU. It is anticipated that this action will reduce city interest expense by $18,428 over the remaining life of this bond with $1,934 of savings accruing in fiscal year 21. Further action on this item will be taken up under the unfinished business portion. This report was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director. I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:40 PM. With no one indicating a desire to speak on this matter. I feel like we have to keep it open for at least a minute. Can't open at the same minute and close at the same minute. That just, just doesn't read well in the years to come. 20 seconds. I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:41 PM. Thank you for your patience. Under 13D. It's a public hearing for Resolution 2020-16 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond to the amount of $2 million. Notice of this public hearing notice was made available in the August 27, 2020 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia City Library, Community Center, and SAU. It is anticipated that this action will reduce city interest expense by $85,238 over the remaining life of this bond with $9,900 of savings accruing in fiscal year 21. This item will be taken up under unfinished business after we open and close the public hearing. It was submitted by Glenn Smith, our finance director. So I'd ask the public hearing to open here at 7:42, please. This will be an opportunity for public to comment. I'd like to assure those of you viewing at home, that's not me snoring. I purr.
That's not what your wife said.
Let me, I know this, we said it last week. I'm going to say it again, though. I'm surprised no one from the public really tuned into this issue and offered a thank you for the work that you have done, both as the finance committee on this council, but also to you, Glenn, as the finance manager of this city. This is significant savings that really saves the taxpayers. So I was hoping someone would speak up, but I just want to reiterate my appreciation to the council as well as to you.
Thank you very much.
Let's close this public hearing at 7:43. Moving right along to 13E. It's a public hearing regarding a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to $420,363 in community development block grant COVID-19 monies to fund requests from seven public service providers. Mr. Myers, would you like to walk us through this just a little bit here with-
I will, Mr. Mayor, and we also have Donna Lane available for us as well, who administers many of the CDBG applications that the city applies for and receives. So this was, as I refer to sometimes in staff meetings, some of those silos of money that are targeted for specific programs or specific services or reimbursements as they may be. And this is something through the Community Development Block Grant through the Community Development Finance Authority, where communities can apply for up to $500,000. Does not mean we will necessarily receive all this money. Depends on what the allocation is that's available to the state and how many applicants go in for that. But this particular grant, Glenn Smith worked on it with staff from our welfare department and coordinated a couple of meetings with service, public service providers, social service agencies in our, in our area. And after listening to all the requests and how we prioritized and what could be proposed to be funded, you can see the list of the agencies that are included in this $420,363 figure in the bottom of the first page of this agenda item. So they include the city, Bellnap House, Lake Region Community Developers, New Beginnings Without Violence and Abuse, Isaiah 61 Cafe, and the Society of St. Vincent de Paul Laconia Conference. And the next page carries on with the Community Action Program, which is a combined Bellnap and Merrimack County, and there's some dollars for administration of the grant. So those collectively are broken down to support everything from homeless shelter costs, cleaning of facilities, in some cases staffing of certain of these providers, some furnishings, emergency assistance for fuel repairs, electric payments, medical costs, in some cases supporting folks who may become homeless, some groceries, again, fuel repairs, medical costs, and some kitchen equipment in the case of the Community Action Program. So these are all intended to be safety nets, as has been put in place through some of the various COVID dollars that have come to the state and the city already. Additionally, there's been some stays toward evictions or utility shut-offs to help people during these challenging times who may have been impacted through jobs and, or job losses of ability to earn an income. So this is targeted, I believe, to, going to play sometime right after the first of the year.
Effective January 1st.
Effective January 1st, as additional funds available should they be required in the community under these kind of categories. Glenn has done a great job, and if you want to drill down further to questions, I will certainly defer to Glenn. Or if I've missed something glaring, Glenn, please jump in. And as I said, Donna Lane, who is our administrator on the CDBG funds, is also online, and she can talk us through any of the technical aspects as well.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Lane. Happy to hear from you. Thank you for joining us and happy to hear from you this evening.
You know, I have to read to you, and I apologize. Are you ready? Because it has to be exact. Can you hear me?
Are you loud and clear? Yes.
Okay, here we go. I do want to clarify one thing. When the city really stepped up and asked the social service providers who needed these funds, and you got quite the response. They actually had to be divided because it had to be, they have to serve at least 70% of Laconia to be in this stack of ones we're going to go through. And so we've asked the county to step in for the ones that are a little bit more county-wide, so they're going to get a batch too. So apologize, but here we go. Please note that there, there was an informational document on the website prior to this public hearing. Community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to $500,000 annually is available for economic development projects, up to $500,000 for public facility, up to $500,000 for housing projects, and up to $500,000 for emergency activities. Up to $25,000 is available per planning study grant. All projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. Community development block grant COVID CDBGCV funds were authorized under the CARES Act. Up to $500,000 in CDBGCV funding is available to municipalities. Funding is available to municipalities for new services or quantifiable increase in the level of a service above that which was, had been provided in the last 12 months prior to the application, both of which must be attributed to COVID-19 pandemic. CDBGCV funding is also available to nonprofit public service organizations as sub-applicants to the municipality for activities associated with preparing for responding to or recovering from COVID-19 pandemic. Activities must serve primarily low and moderate income persons. This is an application for CDBGCV public services. Eligible expenses for the municipality include, but not limited to, increased welfare costs, increased homeless housing costs, and new services provided by the municipality attributed to COVID-19 pandemic. Eligible nonprofit public service expenses include costs preparing for responding to, recovering from COVID-19 pandemic, including, but not limited to, childcare services, food banks, senior services, services for persons with disabilities, legal services, resident services, youth services, transportation services, health, mental health, substance abuse services, financial literacy, foreclosure, and homebuyer counseling, homeless services, education outside of school building, tutoring, furniture, equipment, and additional service providers. The request, now I have to tell you exactly who's asking for funds and what the funds are for. Okay, City of Laconia Welfare is asking for $96,000 for COVID temporary homeless shelter costs and emergency assistance. Bellnap House, which is a homeless shelter, is asking for two line items. One is $25,000 for van, and one is $24,600 for cleaning costs. Lakes Region Community Developers, they are low and moderate income housing. They provide services and housing for low and moderate income folks. And they're asking for $90,094 for some staffing. Everything is obviously COVID-related. New Beginnings Without Violence and Abuse is a domestic violence shelter. They're asking for $50,000 for furnishings for suites. They're cutting up their units into, for the social distancing into suites, so they need furniture. Isaiah 61 Cafe, it's a homeless service and food they provide, and they're asking for three separate line items. One is $21,680 for cleaning, emergency assistance. And when we say emergency assistance, we're talking about, like, one-time rent payments, fuel, emergency repairs to their cars, electric payments, stuff like that, medical costs. They're asking for $10,728 for hotels for homeless folks, $20,400 for cleaning the cafe and some groceries where they feed some folks. Also, we have the Society of St. Vincent de Paul Laconia Conference. They're looking for emergency assistance. They're looking for $36,000, again, emergency assistance being those costs that come up, one-time payments. Community Action Program, Bellnap Merrimack Counties, is looking for their elder service program for some kitchen equipment, $20,861, and then we always have to put in an administration line, $25,000, which totals $420,363.
I want to thank you very much for that very thorough explanation of the of what's before us and for public discussion this evening. So certainly, those are the stalwarts of Laconia's nonprofit community, really shows what need there is out there, particularly as a result of COVID. I'd like to open up the public hearing right now for this matter at 7:52 PM. And also remind people that the action on this item will be taken up under unfinished business later on in tonight's meeting. With no one apparently wishing to speak. Thank you again to everyone with these, associated with these organizations, as well as your explanation, Donna. And we will close meeting, we'll close the public hearing, excuse me, at 7:53 PM. Moving right along now to the mayor's report, and then just, just a couple of brief items. And really just a recognition of some of the things that are going on in the city right now. And certainly, as we know, schools have come back into session in a more modified program. I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that teachers, administrators, parents, and our administration have really been hard at work for quite some time during these challenging times. And just want to say thank you very much for that work and acknowledge what's going on and looking forward to good things continuing to happen in our school system. I also want to acknowledge it, really a tragedy averted last week with the fiber alarm fire in the city. And though it did extensive damage to multifamily residents on Dire Street, if I'm not mistaken- And though it did extensive damage to multifamily residents on Dire Street, if I'm not mistaken, the fact is, we're very fortunate to have professional firefighters at the City of Laconia and responding the way that they did. Though there was extensive damage, certainly could have been much worse. And we're just, we're fortunate and just wanted to say thank you to them and the work that they do. So that being said, that would conclude the mayor's report at this point in time. I'd like to move along to number 16 and committee reports. Are there any committee reports tonight? I'll wait to see counselors raise their hands. Wave, jump up and down. Ah, Counselor Haynes.
Yes.
Simple wave. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You make me on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Really well.
Okay, thank you. The Public Works Committee met on two separate issues. One was dealing with the estimated savings for converting curbside solid waste collections from manual to an automated system. Public Works Director Wes Anderson gave us a very good report as to what will be available as far as size containers, how it would be picked up. And I personally asked him what the, what the drawback was to going to an automated pickup, and he said, quite simple, people don't like change. The, there were substantial savings, and the committee felt that, that at least to move this forward, the council should, the committee moved it forward to the council with, with the understanding that it, the containers would have to be purchased, and the containers would belong to the property, and that would be the city expense. And we recognize that that would have to go to the finance committee probably with the extensive, expense of the containers to go to the finance committee for bonding.
Thank you, Counselor Haynes. Scott, what would you recommend as, as far as this matters? Should we, should we refer this to committee right now for?
I would have a motion to refer this to finance committee and
Yeah.
pick that up at the next level there.
So, so made by Counselor, so made by Counselor Haynes and seconded by Counselor Cheney, and I'd be looking for further discussion.
Can I just add?
Please do.
Public Works Director Wes Anderson made it very clear that this is, on the onset, will take probably a good year to implement. There's a lot of legwork to be involved as far as containers and what each dwelling will need. So it's an exploratory of nature, and we thought, just move it forward.
I think that's, I think that's wise, moving it forward and further discussion, determine the fiscal impact. Be looking towards other counselors here during this, any other discussion. Counselor Susie. No, not you. Okay. I just saw you come off mute and one thought you might want to speak.
Another item after this.
All right, yeah, hold your horses. Counselor Lippman.
I was wondering if Counselor Haynes or the manager could speak to how this fits in with our existing solid waste contract and just some scale what we're talking about financially.
Yes, I'd be happy to, Counselor. So thank you for the question. The, our existing contract runs through October 1st of this year. We've already extended it one year, and we have up to one more one-year extension that we would have to do four months in advance. So basically by June 1st of next year, we would have to be on notice on the final one-year extension available for both parties to agree upon, which would then begin in October of '21 and run us through the end of September in '22. So the timing of this is a June 1st decision to do the extension. Backing that up on going out and trying to fine tune the numbers of how our bid will look when it goes out, get out an RFP, get responses back. We would need to be in a position to have that RFP completed with responses and evaluated in order to make a decision sometime in May of next year. Because if we are going to go with an automated system, we want to award the contract because basically somebody would be coming in and doing it, starting up basically 16 months after the fact. That would allow a vendor the time to order a truck and have a truck delivered, because most of the vendors who would be bidding on this would not have extra automated trucks just sitting around. It's an expensive piece of equipment, and they would only have enough equipment on hand to service the routes that they need. So that would be the timing. We would be doing the legwork, getting the RFP ready, putting it out. And basically, if the numbers made sense on where the bids came in, it would, you know, lead towards, is this the route we want to go? Here's the numbers here, how it shakes out. If the numbers came back upside down, where it did not make sense to award the contract and add the additional expense of going out and purchasing toters and paying for those. And if there wasn't enough of a, of a savings, I kind of liken this to the, the LED street lichen version that we did probably about three, maybe four years ago now. We went out and bonded the project. It was a $300,000 bond. We paid about $68,000 a year to pay that bond back with interest. Again, a five-year bond, and the savings was about $100, $105,000 annually right out of the gate on year one. So that was a cash flow positive to the city in the area of $40,000 annually. And when that five-year bond is paid off, it'll be cash flow positive in the neighborhood of $100,000. So I think that's the type of analysis, this analysis that we would do, and that's what we're planning on bringing forward. So the finance committee is meeting tonight after this meeting. It's an item for discussion with some of our projected costs, but the, but those are estimates right now. And until we start putting a lot of work into, into getting this ready for bid, the tighter we are with our expectations of how many canisters and what the routes look like and what that cost is, that information is really going to allow us to get the strongest bid back because it'll be a real solid number that people are basing their bids on versus a lot of variables that are unknown.
Any, any other questions in regards to solid waste pickup? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the role to refer this to the finance committee.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Fauch?
Yes.
Thank you.
With five votes in the affirmative, that will now go to the finance committee. Thank you for the report, Counselor Haynes. Any other committee reports? Counselor Haynes, two for two. Well done.
The second one had
You're on mute.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The second one had to do with protecting our streets, especially any street that's been repaved and had the infrastructure protected for the first five years. Public Works Wes Anderson gave us an extensive background of, this is not uncommon of what other communities do. This is not uncommon. Many of the major cities have the same ordinance to protect our streets. And he gave us an extensive, that, how, how we would go about and the, who it would pertain to in the whole works, and the committee felt that, that we should move this on to the council.
Thank you, Counselor Haynes. Would we look and do anything with that further?
No, that was a recommendation of the Public Works Committee, Mr. Mayor. So that's the report out tonight, and now we will place this item, which was originally on your agenda at the last meeting. We will place it back on with probably a little bit of additional background information that was prepared, and we'll have that on the council agenda for the 27th.
Thank you so much. Any other committee reports this evening? Counselor Susie?
I, I want to bring something up in reference to public safety. Okay. Counselor Cheney's the chairman. I asked him earlier if I could bring this up, and he agreed, so that's what I'm doing. My thing is crosswalks. The crosswalks around the city, I think, are not being, either well adhered, also not being really, in my view, policed by, you know, the enforcement agency, but specifically not really being well adhered. But I, I like the way the crosswalks are done, whereas now there's the numbers, and you can see how much time you have left to cross. The drivers are supposed to do some dope, as we all see. My biggest thing is that all you're seeing is two lines. Secondly, you're seeing a full crosswalk. And secondly, if it's nighttime, most of the time you can't see them at all. I'm not sure if we bring this public safety committee to review and gather more data. But me, I like to see white, I mean, yellow, blue, I mean, big spot. People can see when there's people starting to go in there and stop. Secondly, enforce it also, either repaint them so they're visibly seen if they have to get. I think it's very important because I, I just don't want to see people get injured because of one way or the other. I just, to me, it's, it's a bad thing. Okay, when I see only two stripes in the street, and those stripes start to get worn out, we don't repair them. And then I look around at other cities, and we all have gone to Conca many times, and we know there's a fear in most. You want to make sure you see when people want to cross the streets in Conca, especially going down that main street. You see people crossing. You don't stop for them. You're going to get tagged. And they are seeing that. I'm not seeing when people, the police are walking the beats all over the city, but I'm seeing we're just going to take care of the public safety. I'm Lee Kins.
Thank you very much, Counselor Susie. Appreciate your, your thoughts and your input on that. Public safety certainly has to be. We want more people to come downtown and to shop and to live, and our streets are busier, and should be aware of that and take appropriate actions. Thank you. Counselor Lippman, I believe you did raise your hand a little while ago.
Yes, I just wanted to remind folks we had a finance meeting tonight to deal with the bonds.
Thank you, Counselor Lippman. Counselor Haynes?
Yes, I, I'd just like to ask Counselor Chi, where are we at with the traffic division?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
Okay.
The positions have been filled. The difficulty, of course, is that they have to go through the academy and training and whatever. That said, however, if you look at the activity for the police department, included in there is 607 motor vehicle stops for the month of August compared to 266 last year. Significant increase. 26 summonses, 503 warnings as opposed to 266 warnings. The, the number of stops and warnings is important. And I think it's also important to point out, it's only four more summonses issued. So the enforcement effort is to tell people, you're speeding, you're running a stop sign, whatever, and, and don't do that anymore. And, and I think it's bound to have a positive impact, impact on the traffic. So I guess, simply put, I think the department's making a, an effort to increase traffic enforcement, not necessarily increasing summonses, but increasing interaction with citizens. And once these two people have completed the academy, I suspect even more activity will be visible in, in the future. That's still months away because the academy itself is months long, and then you have field training time, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Just a comment. Court Street is well protected.
Good.
Thank you, counselors. Any other committee reports?
If I just might, I would
You're on mute.
It doesn't want to work.
Soft touch? Well done. Leave it.
I will try to get a safety committee meeting together to talk about the crosswalk issues that Counselor Susie has brought up.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, moving right along to number 17 on our agenda, liaison reports. Liaison reports. Counselor Haynes?
Been busy.
You're also muted.
The
Okay. The Heritage Committee has met for the last couple of months. Unfortunately, they've had a number of demolition permits. And that's what's kept them busy. The last one was Leighton Avenue, and that's just a family rebuilding an old cottage. And there was no historical value, so. So we're moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Haynes. Any other liaison reports? Seeing none, I'd like to move along to number 18, which is citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. This is the opportunity, for those of you listening and viewing, to speak about items that are on tonight's agenda. Pause right here and give you an opportunity to raise your hand. Thought it was a particularly interesting agenda tonight. I thought there was plenty of opportunity to weigh in on some of these items, okay? While saying that no one would like to speak on current agenda items, we move along to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So included in your agenda packet for the first meeting of the month is the financial and operational trends. Starting at the top of the first page of that report, we have the gain in construction value from building permits. And again, the assessing year is how we track our building permits. That runs from April 1st, and I know till March 31st. So we are April, May, June, July, August, for five months through the 12 months in the cycle. You can see we're a little bit over $13 million in value and permits pulled this year, up from about $8 million and $7 million over the last year or two years. So we're running about $5 million ahead of pace, which is a positive. I will point out that this number does not include two public projects that are pretty well documented, one that has already been approved completely, and that is the condominium project at Barton's Motel. So that number does not include any permits that will be pulled for that construction. It also does not include anything on the Lakeport Elm Street project that is still before the planning board. So, you know, we've got one large project approved that no permits pulled yet, and the second one's still pending, but that could certainly adjust those numbers upward once those projects move forward. Fire and Rescue had a, had a number of calls right on the number with August of 2019. A little bit busier in a minor way during motorcycle week being in August this year, but nothing serious on, on the emergency end over there. So that was very good to see on the fire end. Public assistance data, I mentioned a little bit earlier tonight that there were a lot of safety nets that are in place right now regarding evictions and utility shut offs and some other programs that are available. So we have seen our request for public assistance to be very small to start this new fiscal year. So we will continue to monitor that. And if the CDBG grant is successful going forward, that certainly provides some safety nets for after the first of the year. And Counselor Cheney did a very good job speaking to the police department activities, so I will kind of skip over that. And Counselor Chini did a very good job speaking to the police department activities, so I will kind of skip over that. Run down to the city's two largest revenue collections, if you will, the first being property tax. You can look in the bottom right corner of that grid and see that we're at ninety-six and a half percent collected. So very much on track. We're going back all the way to 2014 and looking at those numbers. So that, that was for the, the payment that was due on or around July first. So again, very solid there. We'll continue to monitor that, especially as we get into the second property tax due date later on this year, somewhere late November, first of December timeframe, as some of the immediate relief that went out to folks who were unemployed, some of the stimulus dollars went out early and we think that's supported. We will be watching to see how the trend continues or, or maybe changes toward the end of the year with that second bill. But we are very encouraged by what we've seen so far. Motor vehicles and other bellwether, if you will, of people registering or buying cars or upgrading vehicles from an older model to a newer model, which generally leads to an additional amount of fee being collected when the car is registered. So you can see in terms of percent of the budget, we're pretty much on track with last year's number at seventeen point four percent being collected. We did, as the council will recall, adjust our revenue estimates for that figure down a little bit because of some of the, the comments I've already made about the COVID and people's ability to, to purchase or pay and some stuff. But in terms of straight dollars, this year, we're fourteen thousand dollars ahead of the same pace we were last year. So again, we continue to be encouraged there. On the overtime by department, it's all broken down there for you. We talked a little bit about how there may be more vacation times being taken by people starting this fiscal year, July one, as things pretty much shut down. As far as travel and airline travel went right down, a lot of people who may have had vacations scheduled, especially around the April vacation timeframe, weren't taking them. So we did not see a lot of vacation time once COVID hit. That's why the council did carry forward some dollars into reserve because we anticipate, especially with some of our public safety folks, that more vacation time might be taken this fiscal year. So we'll, we'll continue to watch that and report out any trends. Also, some of the overtime that may fall in some of these categories may be reimbursable depending on circumstances. So even though a number may look a little bit higher, not saying in all cases, but in some cases, either through the FEMA or the CARES funds for reimbursement for COVID-related expenses, there are some dollars available that we are, we are tracking as well. But again, nothing out of the ordinary to report in overtime at this point. Not surprisingly, our request for, you know, parks and recreation facilities is down a little bit for obvious reasons. We do have one additional grievance, which I heard about ten days ago, I think, dealing with a COVID-related item of, in this particular case, it was firefighters or folks on the ambulance who went to a call and someone may have been symptomatic and the city required those firefighters to quarantine, even though they were not feeling symptomatic and there was no positive case on them. So we're trying to work through that issue of how workers' compensation comes in play, how use of personal sick time comes in pay into play, how other sources for reimbursement might come in. So we're, we're trying to be fair and equitable on that, but it's, it's not a black and white type of situation there. So that's something that we're working on. The impact fee numbers there speak for themselves. So again, so a little bit of money has come in, a little over two thousand dollars this fiscal year. You can see the, the balances and all the various reserve accounts at the top of the next page. Boat taxes, again, we flipped over to this fiscal year, but in terms of dollars, we're on track where we were in 2020 at about twenty-seven thousand dollars collected. You can see all the revenue and expenditures year to date, two months into the fiscal year. And then we're, again, we're two months into the fiscal year on the EMS billing. So not quite a trend there yet because as I've shared with you before, there's a significant lag time in the majority of our collections, you know, ninety, hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty days is not uncommon. You can see on the very last page that the EMS for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth. We're at about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars collected in payments. We know that that number will continue to trickle off a little bit. We did receive about thirty-something thousand dollars, I believe, in one of the COVID programs towards lost revenue on the ambulance that will be applied towards that number. But all things considered, when we see the end of that money flowing in, we're probably going to be a little bit less in revenue on the ambulance this year for the simple fact that there were not that many calls. People were nervous. Not a lot of folks were choosing to go into hospitals unless it was absolutely necessary. In March, April, May, they weren't making those calls, especially as you know, the economy, you know, was, was fairly shut down and, and people were staying pretty close to home. So it was just, um, you know, the, the nature of the beast, if you will, of what happened in those months. And again, it's something that, um, you know, we, we target, we look at numbers, we look at trends, but something like that is certainly not something we could have forecasted. So we'll continue to monitor how the remaining outstanding balances come in during the year. I do have one other item, but maybe I'll stop there and take any questions on that report. And then I can go into one additional item and then take questions on that or anything else that may be on the council's mind tonight. Okay, I don't see anybody flagging down here in the video. So I've shared with, with Mayor Hosmer and maybe a couple of counselors that the city was looking into options on how we could come back into public meetings with proper social distancing and good ventilation and allowing public to attend in person with also the possibility of continuing Zoom meetings, Zoom options for those members of the public who wanted to participate but didn't necessarily want to come down and participate in person. So we were looking at what was available in city buildings, school buildings with a couple of objectives. One, the social distancing. Two, the possibility, could we broadcast again on Channel twenty-six, the government channel, so that it goes out over the local cable system? And number three, access for the public to come down in person and still give the Zoom option. We spoke with, I spoke with the superintendent and then Glenn and our IT staff went over and met with the school IT staff. The, the school board has for a little while now been meeting over at the Hewitt Center in the culinary arts section of it, in the cafeteria, if you will, where there's a large enough space for school board members and the administration team to meet, have microphones that are spread out. They can all see and hear each other. They do have a Zoom feature so that folks who didn't want to come down from the public and participate in person can participate remotely, similar to what we're doing tonight. They have made some improvements, especially in the last meeting over the sound quality, which admittedly, and they admitted, was, was a work in progress and was not great. And they do have a camera that covers some basic movements. It's called an owl and just think of an owl turning its head. This camera is referred to as an owl and the owl focuses on who is speaking and a camera remotely just operates itself. We could certainly do that type of a setup as described and, and their higher ceiling space to spread out as one of our newer buildings as far as ventilation goes. The sister piece to that is having conversations with LRPA and could we have a camera person in there because LRPA feeds out of the Hewitt Center as well. So would there be an opportunity to have a camera person in there and be able to, to go live as well? And speaking with the folks at LRPA, they do not think that a single camera in that room is going to do it justice just because of how people need to spread out and the distancing there and trying to have one camera operator pick it all up. So they're concerned that anything that goes out over there, over Channel twenty-six would not be of a quality. We are looking into whether or not our license would allow us to take the Zoom, I'm sorry, not the Zoom, the Zoom meeting that we also live stream on YouTube and take that YouTube feed and put it out on Channel twenty-six. That basically would have the look on Channel twenty-six, just what you're looking at tonight on your grid here, the Hollywood Squares look with everybody in their boxes. So instead of a camera being able to focus on one person speaking or someone at the podium, it would give everybody that grid kind of look in doing that. So throwing that out there is that's what we found. We're still trying to explore options. We will look to see what the cost for a second license is because right now our license allows us to broadcast it over one means, and that's the live streaming on YouTube right now. To also feed it out over LRPA would probably be a more robust licensed structure in place and we need to see what the cost is of that and in way the benefit. I, I will say that the meetings right now, even though they're not on Channel twenty-six, we do upload them to the city's YouTube channel, probably in most cases by noon the next day. So anybody can go in at their own convenient schedule and watch the meeting on our YouTube channel, typically again by noon the next day in most cases. I know some people like to watch it live on the government channel. And I can understand that. This would be a little delay for them, but remember, there's no opportunity for people watching it on Channel twenty-six to participate in the meeting. The only way you can participate with comment is through the Zoom. And even on YouTube, you could watch it live, but you can't participate. So I just want you to keep that in mind when we start to talk about, you know, how important is this to have it go out on Channel twenty-six live where there's no opportunity for folks to participate versus they can go to the, the YouTube channel live and watch it over the internet immediately on, on the same thing. We will continue to explore options, Glenn and the IT staff. If there was discussion about wanting to move forward and try it at the Hewitt Culinary Arts Center for our next meeting, our RT staff is planning on going over in being at the school board meeting and being over at the setup at advance to work with the school IT folks tomorrow and go through the setup and, and make sure we understand how they're putting it together because we would be doing it in their building for future meetings. So if there's a desire to want to move that way, we could do it for the twenty-seventh. There's nothing that says we have to do it for the twenty-seventh. The council can discuss it a little bit more. Way in on what other options might be there. I mean, the multipurpose room at the middle school again, gives us the spacing, you know, it's a large room. I don't know how the acoustics are necessarily in there and, and that's not going to give us an LRPA broadcast over the local cable channel anyway. So I, I put that out there and maybe I'll stop there and see what thoughts or comments are at this point. And Glenn certainly knows more on this than I do and can chime in if there's any kind of technical questions.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Haynes.
Scott, has there been an overwhelming concern of the citizens of this type of forum?
I don't know if there's been overwhelming on the citizens part. I mean, this works. Those are a little clunkier doing Zoom. Yes. The public participation is great that folks under a public meeting with still a Zoom option could choose to come down and still choose to participate from home. I think we've seen a little bit and whether you want to view this as a concern or not, it does allow people anywhere and not necessarily Laconia residents to participate. So if we tried to go to more of a hybrid, we may want to have a conversation about do we need to tighten up a little bit and make sure that someone is a Laconia resident who's speaking at a Laconia meeting from the council. And I think where it, and it doesn't bog us down, but it just slows things down because when you don't have everybody participating in person, everything requires a roll call vote. So, and that's, you know, instance, you know, in, in two meetings when we have to approve seven or eight or nine, you know, boards and commission members, you know, it's a little bit slow of a process. Is it, is there a deal breaker? No. So we're just, we're just exploring options. Putting it out there and, and seeing what the thoughts are.
I'd like to be recognized, Mayor. Counselor Littman.
So I'm, from a counselor's perspective, I would like us to have in-person meetings where we all can be present. You know, state government is starting to move in that direction. As an example, I've attended the governor and council meeting. They did that this past week in the Armory in Concord and were able to create a space that provided for adequate social distance. I mean, the room that we're, you're currently in right now really is not appropriate in terms of meeting what would be considered for a, a public to attend and all the councils to be there. You can't get the level of social distance. The room has low ceilings. It doesn't accommodate what would be considered to be good health hygiene with respect to preventing transmission. So I think it's important that we all be able to be in the same room, but be able to have the proper public health distancing and proper ventilation. You know, we've been lucky so far and we have a low rate in our community, but that can change in an instance.
Thank you, Counselor Littman. I second that. Counselor Chi.
I too would second, second Counselor Littman's position. I'm, I'm looking forward. I've been one of those who's been here right from the start, but I'm looking forward to us all being back together as soon as possible. The only, I guess, could condition I hope was considered is the technical side, things like our clerks' needs. And, and some strong IT support for what we do so that day one, it's, it's right, not experimental. Thank you.
Any other input from the council? Mr. Mayor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then, then what I'm hearing is that we will go and take advantage of the invitation extended by the school board and the administration to go in and watch what they do and learn what they're doing tomorrow. Again, once they record that, we'll be able to listen to the audio on it, which is really the important thing. The video is nice, but the audio and, and, and focus in on the functionality of folks participating in person and, and remotely. We'll certainly can take into consideration things with the clerk about being able to hear in type minutes and you know, with, with good internet and that type of stuff. We think that certainly is doable. And again, I would think at this point we would not put a lot more effort in at this moment anyway to try to do a feed on Channel twenty-six, knowing that the time leans. So think of it this way, if we put it out and, and, and can't do Channel twenty-six, where we're putting it for someone to watch is on the internet anyway. The next day they're watching it off of this, of a YouTube channel on the internet. So if they don't want to do the internet and watch it on YouTube when we're streaming live, then the question is, are they going to go to the internet and watch it once we posted it on the YouTube channel for future viewing? And Zoom is also an internet base and that's really for people where they can participate. So knowing that we don't think one camera feed is going to give us a quality product. Number two, that if we have to buy a second feed, we're adding additional expense. The thinking would be, let's focus on getting a meeting under the same parameters we're doing now on a live YouTube stream and on a Zoom feed and look to see if it makes sense. And we can probably report back to the council by Friday of this week, whether or not we think that's going to make sense to do an in-person meeting. Share with you any concerns or questions we may have, thoughts we may have. And then we would put that out there for the public posting when the agenda was posted for public notice. And I looked at Glenn to see if I've missed anything here that wants to chime in on. So if that's consensus, that's the approach we'll take and we'll report back. And if there's some roadblock, then we wouldn't look to do that for the twenty-seventh. But if things look to be in order after we get involved with the school board meeting tomorrow, then that would be our approach.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Counselor Chini.
I I, I'd like to, for myself, I'd like to ask that the mayor and the manager work to make this decision. I, I mean, I'd love to hear what the decisions are, what the thoughts are, but I don't, I don't think we have to all be involved in the, in the final decision. I have some faith in both of you to, to manage this. This, so the decision I, I'd, I'd hope would be made and, and by you two and, and the rest of us advise. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chini. Counselor Littman.
I guess the other part that I think needs to be considered if we're going to be expanding the, the numbers again, looking at how state government is opening up and holding hearings and the like. Is sort of the public health component at the health screening, you know, if we're going to be bringing lots of people together. I think you know, that, that's also part of, I think, that needs to be looked at.
Certainly, taking that into consideration, I see Counselor, excuse me, the same manager shaking his head. Yes, I think you're correct, Counselor Littman. Counselor Chi, did you raise your hand again?
I did. A, a number of places I've been recently, medical buildings and other public function facilities, they take your temperature going in and that should. Uh, they take your temperature going in and that should be a relatively easy, uh, you know, check on people coming in, uh, particularly the citizens or others coming into the public me, meeting. It'd be nice to know they are carrying a raging temperature.
I mean, we have, um, in Laconia, an outfit that actually produces these types of things that you can just do facial kind of recognition type thing. I mean, I think the, for the, it might, something like that may be good for the city hall to have as well, that something that could be portable and um, not say that we have to do business with the local entity because I know there's another one in Concord that's, um, producing the same type of technology. But, um, you know, I think what Counselor Cheney mentioned in terms of making sure, you know, this is all about risk mitigation. There's no guarantees. It's, um, it's the best you can do.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Lippman. Any other, um, comments from counselors? Seeing none, that's how we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. Terrific. We'll be right along now to new business under item twenty on our agenda, under twenty A. This is a request to unseal non-public minutes from July twenty second, twenty nineteen, November twelfth, twenty nineteen, and November twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. At the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty city council meeting, it was requested to place this on the agenda for the council to vote to unseal non-public minutes ahead of their scheduled time. Uh, this was, uh, submitted by city manager Scott Myers. Right now I'd be looking for a motion to move to approve the early unsealing of non-public meeting minutes ahead of their scheduled time, uh, for dates July twenty second, twenty nineteen, November twelfth, twenty nineteen, November twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Susie. Thank you. Further discussion on this matter. Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haines?
Yes.
You're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Felch?
Yes.
Thank you.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to item twenty B, an update on the city's purchase of, uh, the Diocese of Manchester, um, parcels on Church Street. Scott, I see you taking your headphones off. I can address this. I don't know if you want to. So, okay. So right now, as we discussed at the last city council meeting, purchase and sale agreement was entered into between the city and the Diocese of Manchester to purchase the Buzzio Building, the whole Holy Trinity School and the parking lot behind St. Joseph's Church. I believe those discussions as far as, uh, as we move towards closing are moving along, uh, well. Uh, I understand that the city manager did a walkthrough on the buildings and there was nothing there that was, uh, came as a surprise. Um, as far as, uh, the structure of the building and, and, uh, its current condition. Uh, so as we begin to, to move forward here, we'll be looking for a motion right now to authorize the city manager to sign all documents associated with the closing. And that date is anticipated at, when Scott?
First week of October, I believe.
Uh, sometime during the first week of October. So I'd be looking for that motion and, uh, we can start a discussion. So made by Counselor Haines, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Further discussion on this matter. Seeing no one, uh, requesting a further discussion on this, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haines?
Yes.
Counselor Ha, uh, Counselor Felch?
Yes.
With five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Moving along to twenty C, which is temporary traffic order twenty twenty dash oh seven, the Bell Not Mill Society Riverside Duck Derby on October seventeenth, twenty twenty. They had, it's a request to reserve parking and to waive fees associated with the event. On August twenty fourth, twenty twenty, the city council approved the Bell Not Mills Society's request to use Rotary Riverside Park, uh, October seventeenth, twenty twenty, for the Riverside Duck Derby fundraising event. In connection with that event, the mill is requesting that twelve reverse angle parking spaces, spaces adjacent to the Bell Not Mill and Rotary Park be reserved by the use of cones from six AM to five PM the day of the event. The parking spaces will be used to accommodate three food trucks, the band for loading and unloading their equipment for radio station one oh four point nine and for the large inflated duck. Bell Not Mill is also requesting a waiver of fees associated with this event. Special event fee, as most know, is one hundred dollars. There'll be no additional cost to the city. This was submitted by Scott Myers, city manager. So be looking for a motion right now to approve temporary traffic order twenty twenty dash oh seven from Bell Not Mill Society to reserve parking spaces in connection with the Riverside Duck Derby and to waive fees associated with the event. Have any takers? Thank you, Counselor Haines. Big fan of the Duck Derby. Counselor Cheney coming in with a second there. Terrific. Uh, any further discussion among counselors? Seeing none right now, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Susie?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haines?
Yes.
Counselor Felch?
Yeah.
With five votes in the affir, in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving on to item number twenty D, which is an update from Laconia Park and Rex, Parks and Recreation regarding the skate park meeting that was held on September first, twenty twenty at the Laconia Community Center, as well as options that were discussed for the park. I do believe that, um, park director, uh, Director of Recreation, Amy Lovisek, is on the line with us. And if she would like to perhaps briefly just let us know, um, so now give us a synopsis of the staff report.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Terrific. Thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Welcome. Um, so real quick, I know you all have probably read it, so I don't need to give you the whole rundown, but, um, in September, we did have the meeting and we had thirteen people show up. Counselor Felch was one of them, so I appreciate that. Uh, we did have one adult and the rest were, were teenagers. For the most part, what we talked about were, um, materials that they wanted to see the park made out of, the location where they wanted the park and, um, that's, that's basically the gist of, of what we talked about. Um, we also discussed money as well, but we'll get into that in a minute. Um, so they, what it seemed like the, the group had mentioned was concrete is the way to go nowadays. Um, we had the two options, which was concrete and one was this coated steel. The downside apparently on the coated steel was that there are some, some transitional issues going from the pavement onto the actual coated steel elements. And, uh, also that they do in time break apart and they become tripping hazards and such. So there is some downside to them, even though they are cheaper naturally. However, they did choose the concrete as that is the much more, what they called ridable. Um, it's seamless and it's just apparently the thing to do. Um, my question was, does concrete have any issues up here in the northern parts of our, of our lovely country? And it seems as though concrete is, is completely, uh, usable here. Um, there's not a lot of upkeep. There will be some cracks that have to be repaired every now and then naturally, but we will go through and it will be made properly the first time and therefore we won't have to deal with major issues. As far as locations go, the group did decide that they would like to move their location from the current skate park, which is at the police department on New Salem Street. Um, actually it's on the Fair Street side. They'd like to move that to where the old Opichi Clubhouse was, which is, uh, right along one oh six, uh, the southern part of the park. It's very visible, so we'd have a lot of safety. Um, you know, safety would be a part of it as well as, uh, security. So there's also not a lot of residents that the kids, uh, liked because they, they tend to not use the best language sometimes and, um, this, this doesn't impact anyone else, whereas the other options that we had were around residences or were too remote for the police to help us out in a, in a, in a situation. So those are the major things. However, uh, after the meeting, uh, we actually, at the meeting, they decided that they would form a five oh one C three and start fundraising. And knowing that the city wasn't going to fund the entire park, um, I made that loud and clear and explained to them that they needed to step up and, and start, start helping out. Um, in my opinion, if they are involved in fundraising of any sort for this and to get this movement going, uh, they'll, they'll treat it with respect, um, which is what we really need there and they'll have others treat it with respect. So they're going to set the five oh one C three up. Um, after the meeting was finished, I spoke with the American Ramp Company, who is having a crew in Bangor, Maine at the end of October and suggested that if we are interested in doing a phase one, that the city might be willing to put in some money to start the, the project. We could do a phase one and we'd get about a forty percent discount, um, and get things moving. We'd have a full operational park, um, just not to the extent that everybody wanted. So that gives the, the five oh one C three an opportunity to come through and make some donations and get that second phase up and running.
So Amy, there's no motion attached to this. Are you looking for, uh, the council to consider allocating seventy-five hundred dollars to this phase one or am I misreading that right now?
I, I am not at this moment. Um, I think maybe in the next, next meeting, I might come back and ask for something. Scott, did you want to chime in?
So you're, you're softening us up now.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things in play here, uh, and Amy's right, we don't have any requests tonight. We didn't want to kind of, you know, have come to a foregone conclusion. So a couple of points I want to be clear on. I don't think any one of us expects a five oh one C three to go out and raise a hundred thousand dollars. We don't think that's realistic. We do think that an amount of one hundred thousand dollars could get a, the full pad in place in probably three of the elements to get us going with. And the question I had for Amy, and it was followed up with the construction company, is, is there any downside to building part of it now and adding, adding two more elements into it, you know, a year or two from now? And the answer was no, you don't lose any integrity. You don't lose any of the quality by coming in and adding afterwards, which was, which was important to us to know that, you know, we don't lose anything by building it in two pieces. Uh, this could have cost us seventy-five hundred dollars to have somebody design it. The company's not just going to design it, knowing that they're not doing the work. If they are awarded the contract, they will reimburse us those dollars, um, because of that. And then also the savings by having a crew somewhere else in the country already mobilized, being in Maine. If they can do another job, you know, in the region while they're up this way, that provides the forty percent savings that Amy was talking about. So we wanted to allow the discussion happen, but if you're looking at what might make sense at the next meeting, assuming there's consensus, it could be a request to transfer a hundred thousand dollars out of the non-capital reserve account to allow a design and to allow a phase one to be constructed and then let everything else play out, um, you know, in addition to raising cash. You know, the five oh one C three could get some in-kind materials. It could be things like lighting, it could be fencing, it could be, you know, there might be some businesses in the area who would rather donate product um, than cash that we might already use to it. So those are the things in play, but we think we can get a very workable foundation and a couple of elements in place and allow it to grow with no downside and save some money off of the straight construction if we did this sometime a year or two later down the road. So that would be a big picture approach, depending on how the conversation goes tonight and what the will of the council is.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, Counselor Haines.
Scott, there was money appropriated to that, wasn't there?
So Counselor, there was a request, I think, for me back in April, um, to fund a couple of, of maybe four, five, six projects with that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we weren't sure we were going to receive a year ago. And we put it in a contingency. We funded two projects out of there, the scale, station repair and the design for the, uh, the sewage project at Bon Bark, Bon Park. We moved the rest of it into contingents, uh, sorry, the non-capital reserve account. Out of that so far, we funded the up to eighty thousand, I think it was, for the Weers Fire Station improvements. You've got a request before you tonight for a hundred and sixty thousand for some police department items. The request on that laundry list of, of items, if you will, was ninety thousand at the time. So in reality, we talked about it, we didn't propose it then, um, you know, whether it's ninety thousand or a hundred thousand, that money was certainly available then. It's available now if the council chooses to do something with it.
If I might, that was high on the capital improvement, was it? Yes, yes. Okay. So I'd just like to point that out to the council, that that was on, high on the capital improvement.
The council voted against it.
It, it appears to me, I mean, if we start talking about a two hundred thousand dollar project and we can save forty percent, we're now down to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So why not do the one twenty and, and, and then hope the five oh one C three does the lighting and the fencing and the other things? I mean, it just, for, for twenty grand, it, I think we ought to, in, instead of getting three rides, let's get them all done.
And I, and I think that's a great point. I think the, the specific language is there's cost over two hundred thousand. And until we say to them, these are the five elements that we're looking for. Now go design and then give us a construction estimate. We don't, we don't know for sure. So I'd hate to pin our hopes on a hundred and twenty thousand does it. But if, at a minimum, if we wanted to say, let's at least show the commitment to a hundred to get what we can. And once we get the design build cost, we can come back to you and let's say, let's move with the whole thing if it makes sense.
Yeah, certainly. That's fair. I like that.
Counselor Lippman?
So I guess two things. I think one, um, the, the sighting of the park is, I think, an issue that deserves some public, uh, discussion before moving it from its current location. And secondly, I think we did specifically vote not to move it forward at this time. But I also understand there's some, maybe some different elements that make it worth considering, but I do think the location of it, transparency before we move ahead.
So it would seem to me, Counselor Lippman is requesting that on our next agenda, that we perhaps open this up to the public as to other thoughts on moving it from New Salem or Fair Street over to Opichi Park.
Absolutely. And that's why we weren't asking for any dollars or any go ahead tonight, knowing that. So if there's consensus that we think this is workable as an initial stage without, you know, without having anybody chime in yet on it, uh, from the, from the public input, we'll certainly get it on the agenda. We will work to make sure, um, it gets out of the Laconia links, that this is an important item and we're looking for feedback. We can be hopeful that the Daily Sun will run a story and focus on, um, you know, this component of it as well. And, um, again, I think to Amy's point that she brought up, there are no immediate, uh, residences around that park. And we talked about maybe doing it in Sanborn Park, um, in some of the green space. Again, you've got Again, you've got houses on both sides, Levitt Park, similar situation. So, you know, it I think that has a positive for it at OPG, but certainly we will do everything we can to get the word out that it's not only dollars, it's a possible change of of location.
Okay.
What's wrong with the current location in terms of that and the property that we already own in that area for?
I think I think really what's wrong with that location is, number one, it's too small. It's really undersized for what a park, minimum park size should be. There's very limited parking there. There's a couple of spaces. You know, we're we're really seeing this, and Amy held me up, but be generational. It's adults, it's it's, you know, teenagers. It's the younger kids on boards, but I know in speaking with Glenn, it's the scooters now as well that are also using some of these elements. So it really runs the gamut and in places that Glenn has seen with his family in particular. You know, the different generations actually respect each other's space, and so there's beginner elements involved, and there's more advanced elements involved as well. But I think I think the size of that space, the limited parking, and if you go by there now, you actually see a few police vehicles parked there. I think they would love to gain that for additional square footage for PD.
Any further input on this? Thank you, Counselor Lippman, for your thoughts on that. Counsel Felch? Go right ahead.
You're muted.
There we go. Yeah, I got it. First of all, when counselors aren't talking, please mute because I'm getting awful back and can't hear half the stuff said. Second of all, I'm in Vermont right now. I just went to the Burlington Skate Park yesterday. I spoke with some people. They're Can you still hear me? All right, I'm back, I think.
The last thing we heard you say, Counsel, was that you're in Burlington, Vermont, and meeting with the skate park folks.
Yes, and I went to the skate park. It's in a remote location, actually. It's not well seen from the road, but there is a like a wild trail right beside it. So there's people going by all the time. The 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 people there are, it was well-used. The kids themselves watch out for the park itself. I think it's a great opportunity. I also will, I took some pictures and got some information that I'll get together with Amy and discuss with her. But yeah, I'm definitely all for whatever we can do to get this thing rolling.
I think the first step here, thank you, Counsel Felch, is to get it on the agenda for our next meeting for this discussion. And then as perhaps one of one of one of the counselors can add it to the agenda as well, request that to the agenda for looking for funds to put in place. We can have that discussion and certainly an opportunity for public input. Okay. I think we can, we don't need to vote on this, right? And I think we've got some consensus as to what we'd like to do, so we can move along. Thank you very much, counselors. Moving along to 20e, this is a transfer of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the non-capital reserve fund account. As per our conversation regarding fiscal year 2020 capital improvement requests, we had originally requested and were recommend and were recommended for the purchase of the following. Priority dispatch software, fifty-four thousand dollars, police cameras, thirty-six thousand dollars, police electronic variable message board, thirty-six thousand, law enforcement dictation software, forty thousand, replacement of dispatch AC unit, fifteen thousand, for a total of one hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. These items were not originally funded with the approval and funding of this year's city budget due to the current COVID-19 pandemic uncertainty. It and this was submitted by Chief Canfield. So it certainly is his hope that these items can be fun can be funded as the outlook for the future is a little more optimistic. Chief Canfield said he has secured a federal grant that will be covering the associated costs of purchasing the electronic message boards and have acquired the law enforcement dictation soft software, thereby eliminating the need for these two items. Unfortunately, in the meantime, our twelve-year-old force operation simulator has failed and is in dire need for immediate replacement. This is a critical piece of equipment that we that the police department office uses in order to train officers in low light and decision-making when it comes to the use of force. Certainly with what's going on nationally right now, this is a topic that additional training, constant training and honing of skills is certainly a priority for police departments. Based on this, the the chief would like to request a modify the modification and funding of the police department's capital improvement requests using non-capital reserve funds as follows. Priority dispatch software, fifty-four thousand, police cameras, thirty-six thousand, dispatch AC unit of fifteen thousand, force options simulator, fifty-five thousand, for a total of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And this report was submitted by Matt Canfield, Chief of Police. So based on this report, he's requesting a proposed motion to approve the transfer of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars from non-capital reserve fund account for these purposes. And that was a motion made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. I'd put this forward now for further discussion from the council.
If I may, Mayor. This is actually a reduction in in expenditure of about twenty-one thousand dollars. And and I want to thank the chief for the efforts he made to to get the electronic variable message board paid for. I think the addition of the force option simulator simulator is actually a critical component, particularly given the the problems we see around the country right now with with force, use of force decision-making. So I I strongly recommend that the council authorize this purchase. The priority dispatch, I'm very familiar with, as it happens. The 911 system in New Hampshire is run on a priority dispatch system for telecommunications, not dispatchers, but it's the same company. They are internationally recognized and used. And again, I would strongly support that purchase. The air conditioning, I'm sure the clerk supports it, knowing her feelings about air conditioning. And the police cameras, I think, are a valuable addition or expansion of of our use of cameras. And I would also strongly support that purchase as well.
Thank you, Counsel Cheney. And are these cameras, you may or may not know, should have addressed this with you ahead of time, are these fixed-location cameras or are these body cameras?
No, I believe these are the body cameras.
Yeah, the body.
No, I'm sorry. I thought they were.
No, I think we've fully funded the body cameras and done all the training probably over the last two budgets. These are the remote ones that we can put in hotspots or challenging areas. Could be pumpkin festival, could be motorcycle week, could be a planned rally, could just be a part of the neighborhood that we're doing. We bought about four of the four cameras of a different model about five years ago, and they were very disappointment to the department in the quality of the video. And we got some credit back. We went out and used that credit towards a different company, different model, purchased one to begin with, and we're very pleased with how to access it and the quality of the video and the timeliness. So this is to purchase two more of those style, which would now give us three to place in the city as needed.
Despite my ignorance, I still support the purchase.
Any further discussion on the motion that's on the table right now? Seeing none, I'd I thought it was Counsel Felch, but it's not. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
You're muted.
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you very much, counselors. Moving on to 20f. This was, I believe, these policies were sent to all council members two weeks ago, perhaps, Scott, or close to. Yeah, so the discussion is centered around the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Through the efforts of its members creates legislative policies that guide its government advocacy process through the upcoming legislative sessions, which should start in January 2021. Approval of these legislative policies allows the New Hampshire Municipal Association to focus on drafting and/or supporting legislation according to the vote of the New Hampshire Municipal Association members. It is the NHMA's opportunity to craft and support bills on what is important to municipalities regarding finance, revenue, rules, regulations, land use, general governance, and more. As the city does every two years, these proposals are brought forward to the city council for review and approval. The city will be represented at the conference and will vote the wishes of the governing body, that being the city council. So the dot, you have the documents attached here, city manager has provided them, as I said a couple of weeks ago. And I'll be looking right now for a motion to move the approval of the 2021-22 New Hampshire Municipal Association Legislative Policies as presented, so made by Counselor Cheney and seconded by Counselor Haynes. Further discussion on these matters. Counsel Susie? Your request, I just saw you come off mute, didn't want to so seeing no request for further discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
That's five votes in the affirmative, and that motion passes. Thank you, counselors. So we are having an addendum to the agenda this evening and having to do with the Laconia Airport Authority. And we'd be looking for a motion to suspend the rules so we can address this this issue, so made by Counsel Cheney, seconded by Counsel Haynes, so move. And further discussion, seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll and the motion to suspend the rules.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, the rules for this matter have been suspended. The topic that's been presented is involves a grant agreement between the Laconia Municipal Airport and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics has offered a grant for the following project, SBG-09-16-2020 Airfield Pavement Maintenance and Marking Project. Slurry seal and mark the terminal in itinerant parking aprons. The Bureau of Aeronautics requests that general agreement be executed by the airport sponsor, Laconia Municipal Airport, and returned to New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics to be submitted to the governor and council for approval. There is no fiscal impact for the city or the Laconia Municipal Airport. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation, for on behalf of the United States and the state, will pay one hundred percent of the allowable costs incurred accomplishing the project as the United States and state's share of the project. At a meeting on August 20th, 2020, the Laconia Airport Authority approved the agreement and authorized Chair Andrew Hausner to sign the agreement on behalf of the Laconia Airport Authority. We are now seeking authorization for Andrew Hausner as the mayor of the city of Laconia to sign the agreement on behalf of the city of Laconia. This report was submitted by Mark Eversen, the airport manager. So right now, I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the mayor of Laconia to sign the grant agreement between the Laconia Municipal Airport and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics. So made by Counsel Haynes, seconded by Counsel Cheney. Further discussion among counselors. Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
With five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Thank you, counselors, for your work on that. Moving right along to number 21, which is our unfinished business here. I want to go through every word.
We're supposed to leave.
If you had the over, you're a winner. You have the under, you've lost. Anyway, under unfinished business, this is second reading of ordinance 221-37 pertaining to the conversion of three of the two-hour parking spaces on Union Avenue in front of 781 Union Ave to fifteen-minute parking spaces, freeing up parking. So the building that is right now, the Laconia Daily Sun, as well as Lakeport Wayfair, would perhaps make it a little easier for folks to come in and and park and take care of their business and then move on and free and open up more spaces. I'd be looking for the first motion is a motion to waive a reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Counsel Cheney, seconded by Counsel Haynes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. I'd be looking for a second motion on this matter to move a second reading of ordinance 221-37 pertaining to the conversion of three parking spaces from two two-hour parking from two-hour parking to fifteen-minute parking in front of 781 Union Avenue. So made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch?
Yes.
That's five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Finally, I'd be looking for motion to approve ordinance 221-37 pertaining to the conversion of three parking spaces from two-hour parking to fifteen-minute parking in front of 781 Union Avenue, so made by Counselor Haynes, seconded by Counsel Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk. Oh, sorry, Counsel Felch, the light throws me off over your head there. Did you want to speak? Hand down, fair enough. Seeing no requests to speak, no further discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Cheney?
Yes.
Counsel Susie?
Yes.
Counsel Lippman?
Yes.
Counsel Haynes?
Yes.
Counsel Felch? Counsel Felch, you're muted.
Yes.
Splendid. That motion passes. Five votes in the affirmative. Splendid. That motion passes. Five votes in the affirmative. Well done. We move on to 21B, which is a second reading and approval of Resolution 2020-14 relative to authorizing bonds and notes for the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2015 bond in the amount of $6,077,093. The first thing I'd be looking for here would be a motion to waive the reading of the resolution in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Council Cheney, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Further discussion? Seeing, seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Second, be looking for a motion to move a second reading of Resolution 2020-14 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2015 bond in the amount of $6,077,093. So made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Well done. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. And third and final on this item, we're looking for a motion to move to approve 2020-14 Resolution 2020-14 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2015 bond in the amount of $6,077,093. So made by Council Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving right along to item 21C on tonight's agenda, second reading and approval of Resolution 2020-15 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $630,000. Be first looking for a motion to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Council Cheney, seconded by Council Haynes. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yes.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Secondly, I'd be looking for a motion to move a second reading of Resolution 2020-15 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $630,000. So made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yeah.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Third and final on this agenda item, we're looking for a motion to move to approve Resolution 2020-15 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $630,000. So made by Council Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Thank you, councilors. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Moving along to item 21C, which is the second reading and approval of Resolution 2020-16 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $2 million. First thing we'd be looking for is a motion to move, move to waive a reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only, so made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Secondly, we'd be looking for a motion to move a second reading of Resolution 2020-16 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $2 million. So made by Council Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Further discussion? Seeing no request for further discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Third and final on this agenda item, looking for a motion to, a move to approve Resolution 2020-16 relative to authorizing bonds and notes of the city to refund the outstanding balance of a 2018 bond in the amount of $2 million. So made by Council Haynes, seconded by Council Cheney. Further discussion among the council? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yes.
Thank you, councilors. That's five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. We're really rolling now. Item 21D on our agenda this evening, this is a second reading and approval of Resolution 2020. Wait a minute here. 21E, this is a proposed application to the Community Development Finance Authority for up to $420,363 in community development block grant COVID-19 monies to fund requests from seven public service providers. Be looking for a motion right now to approve the proposed application on the proposed project, Community Development Block Grant COVID-19 projects in the amount of $420,363. So made by Council Haynes and seconded by Councilor Cheney. Further discussion? Seeing no requests for further discussion, I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Council Cheney?
Yes.
Council Susie?
Yes.
Council Littman?
Yes.
Council Haynes?
Yes.
Council Fauch?
Yeah.
Five votes in the affirmative, that motion passes. Includes our formal agenda on tonight's meeting, but we are now at 22. Oh, yes, for absolutely, Council Littman.
I just want to validate that, you know, we just went through a series of three motions for each of the prior. I just want to make sure technically before we end tonight that we've covered everything that we need to vote on this CDBGCV proposal.
I defer to city manager, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, great question. So this is just the move to propose the application. It's not a guarantee of award. Donna Lane was on and stayed on till we just took the action and she heard the vote and she just logged off. So knowing Donna, if she had any concerns about what the motions were, I know she would have raised her hand in a heartbeat and I was looking for that particular thing, so we're good.
Thank you. Mayor, you're muted.
Sorry and thank you. Moving right along now to councillor comments, item number 22 on tonight's agenda. Council Cheney?
I have had a request from the Hillcroft Road Homeowners Association to have the council consider the return of some property that was taken, I guess, for tax reasons several years ago, a beach on Pogus. Called Pogus, hold on. Oh, Pogus Cove. There apparently was a beach down there that the homeowners had maintained. It was taken for tax reasons, unpaid tax reasons. The homeowners would like to take it back, put it back on the tax rolls, and I'd ask that this letter or this request be forwarded to the Land and Buildings Committee for review and consideration and hopefully be, have it brought up at a future meeting to work it out.
Scott, you can answer. We have to make this an agenda item and then have it referred out to committee?
We don't have to go that route, but I think administratively, we're already working on it right now. Council Cheney is correct that it was a development there. The developer didn't pay taxes on the final part. This is before my time here, but we took the deed and part of the deed includes a beach, and it's not really a city beach other than we took it by tax deed. And it's really deeded to the association. It's not something that we could say, oh, we can create a public beach out of this right now. So it's really just working through the legal nuances on how we transfer the deed from the city name to the homeowners association because we don't want to be responsible for the upkeep and the maintenance on it if it's something that's not a public beach anyway. So aware of it administratively, I don't think it needs to go to land buildings. It certainly could. But I think it's something that we're, is on our radar and hopefully within the next four weeks, we can bring you something for council action on doing exactly what they're asking.
I would withdraw my request and ask that the manager work with them to, I mean, they're willing to pay taxes. I apologize.
They're willing to pay taxes on the property. They're willing to maintain it and, and keep it up. It is not accessible, as I understand it, in any public, there's no road to it, no anything. And to get it back on the tax rolls makes all the sense in the world. So if the manager can work that through and report to us in two weeks, I'd be thrilled very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Cheney, and thanks, Scott. Any further councillor comments tonight? Seeing none, nice work. Please do, Council Cheney.
I just wanted to ask a question.
I'm sure we were told, but when are we going to be deciding on this management group for the Colonial Theater?
We are working on the contract with our legal counsel right now, and I'm hopeful that we'll have it for you on the 27th.
Okay, so if I have some concerns or comments, can I address directly to the manager between now and the 27th, or do I have to do it here?
No, so any problem with that?
Thank you.
The only issue is that your insights are usually quite good and help us all, so.
Well, I.
But anyway, no, feel free to go.
I can do it very quickly or at least give you a thumbs up.
You can send it an email too, if you've got any questions.
All right, that's fine. Yep, fine.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any other councillor comments tonight? Seeing none, nice work, councilors and staff here this evening. I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:27 PM. Finance committee, please stay on. Thank you.
Council Cheney and myself tonight.
That's gonna be how we need here.
I'm hoping you move this right along, Henry.
I'm looking to do so.
I had faith, I really did.